Session.
Intention for our.
And I'd ask the first please call roll.
Adams.
Here.
Barlett.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Oh no.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Wonkel.
Here.
Formowski. Williams.
Here.
Mayor Resert.
Here.
Turned here.
Here. Thank you, um, couple items real quick. The next council meeting is on Tuesday, November 12th. Tuesday, November 12th. That's Thursday, Monday. Um, also, I'm in need, there's a fundraiser at Kay's Creek on November the 16th. And, um, it's like a chicken wing eating contest and obviously you know I can eat a lot, but I can't eat the hot stuff like I used to. So if any of you aldermen would like to fill in for me that night and eat the, the hot stuff, I mean, that wings keep getting hotter and hotter each. I mean, I had to throw it out there to you. I mean, Jeff, you look like a great one.
No, I eat wings, but no, you're getting to that heat level again, we're old.
And I already, I know, and I already hit the policemen up and they already have representatives and I already hit the firemen up and they already have representatives. So if none of the aldermen want to do it, Aaron, that baby might come out quicker.
Oh, he likes spicy food.
Okay. So if, I'll just turn it over to the city employees who want to do it, so. Everybody wants to do it?
What does this?
Uh, he's in the same category as me. Cheryl, Terry, Rick. Department has snacks and then have city employees.
You gotta find someone younger, that spicy food is not.
I totally agree. So we'll, I'll look into that and then the last thing before the mayor's report is, um, the 0-6 Miami Dolphins play tonight, so let's, let's get this going. I mean, it's still in the time, like prime time this year. They traded another, their running back again tonight. Yeah. All right. Um, first item is under the mayor's report, discuss liquor ordinance in regard to a class double A convenience stores granted. Um, we, we spoke on this a couple meetings ago, Mr. Patel's here, he's making a request, um, of allowing convenience stores to have a pouring license. And I just need some direction from the council on, do we want to go that direction? Do we want to leave it the same? Um, do you want it on the agenda next time where there's a, a formal vote or is there consensus tonight to not do it or do it? I, I just kind of need direction because Mr. Patel's been waiting and I don't, I hate that he's been waiting.
It's fine.
Yeah, Aaron.
I've already had a few people contact me, they don't like the idea that we've got enough already, so that's, we have to resume.
Okay. Brandon.
I mentioned when we, uh, accepted the cannabis tax that alcohol didn't have a tax and if you're trying to, um, influence there not being a tavern on every corner, then taxing would be, there wouldn't be that many people that would want to venture that way if, and there needs to be some kind of tax on alcohol and tobacco to equal it out with the cannabis tax. People have been complaining about property taxes and all the people I've talked to would rather pay more on a 12 pack than on their house. So we could look at that as a deterrent to having a tavern on every corner that's double of what we set it at this, if we set the city alcohol tax at 3% and double it for taverns, I mean, that's something we could consider. It would be revenue and it wouldn't influence something on every corner.
Yeah, that's fine, I could, I could see that, but for now, this future, I would need, I'd support with Aaron here, I don't want to continue, I don't want to offer any more pouring licenses to convenience stores, that's what I've been hearing also.
I think if you open up that door, I mean, it's just really a different request for a lot of different businesses using alcohol.
I mean, Mr. Patel, I mean, I know you've already talked and we know where you stand obviously, um, I just needed, you know, he's been waiting and I just kind of need the council. So what I'm hearing is that we get stalled.
I appreciate you coming forth with it too, and you're a business owner and I respect the fact you're trying to proceed what I'm hearing from general public, is now they do not want to allow more places to have pouring licenses. So I wouldn't, I don't know what anyone else is thinking, if you want to look at this and go raise a hand or if you want to go show, but you've got to know here, you've got to know here, you've got to know there, so.
I'm not supporting more pouring until there's a tax on alcohol, period. So I'm not going to support it now unless we establish an alcohol tax. Is there consensus? So consensus, everybody not in favor of moving forward? Please respond by saying aye.
Not in favor.
No, no, no. We're good.
Yeah. I'm not supporting the pouring license.
Yes, here. Here. Just a consensus, you can say that. We're good. Okay. All right. Uh, committee reports tonight, finance, IT and personnel. Alderman, cook.
Uh, Ron's not going to be here.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Well, Ron's wanting a new postal machine, the other one is quite old and it's, the parts are hard to come by and they're going to get, they can get a new machine with Pitney Bowes, the same people they've been doing business with anyway, and it's going to cost like $10 more a month. It's like a five-year contract.
Now, do we own this or is something that we lease?
We lease that. So it'll be $600 for the extra. Yeah, it's only $10 more a month.
Perfect.
Cheryl.
And just to speak to that, since Ron's not here, I do use that machine in Missy and Ron's absence to run mail and we're throwing parts at it right now because it continually jams. This is the machine that's used to mail out all the water bills, all the disconnect notice, so it, it runs heavy mail through it. So I mean, it's a very used item. Um, we went with the new computer module because they couldn't get the old scale looking one, um, but it is jamming and he says there's really no, they're kind of outdated parts, you gotta keep up like a copier.
Does Ron already have one in mind or has he got one?
Yes, Pitney Bowes just gives us what our volume is, they kind of look at that, you know, what, what we utilize, do we want it sealing, do we want it, you know, printing the time on it, date on it, you know, things like that, and they mimic what we have. So, yeah, they just of course give us a new proposal and I don't think there's, I mean, a huge per month.
Next at $10.
It goes from $10, $250 to $260.
Okay.
$260.
Fair for updating and getting.
Yes, but it, it just wears out, the parts wear out and it does jam when you're trying to run four to five boxes of mail, you know, and we got those going out from four different zones and it's constantly jamming, you're looking it up, it's, it makes it pretty tedious.
Some of the consumers in my own.
Very good. Thank you. When we talk planning and public works, Alderman and Scott.
Two items, uh, first, discuss waiving bids and accepting proposal for HVAC control system software upgrades.
The building has a computer that runs all the, back in the air handling room, it has these actuators and that's what controls the, in the building and this software, or the equipment that went with this was originally installed in 2008 in the original software and then we upgraded it in 2012. Well, now it's only had one more year where they could do anything to it and then that's going to be phased out. And the computer that it's on is running Windows XP which hasn't been, uh, Rex Skender said it hasn't been supported since 2014. So if something happens to that computer, then we'd have to pay still the amount that I'm asking for to get it, put on a new machine because they don't support, they don't support XP, nobody does anymore. So basically, um, I, I put in $11,000 for it last summer, or I talked to him last summer about it and, um, they had a technician came this, this, uh, September and he looked at the whole system and the only way you could see it is if you actually did that, well, we'd have had to pay a couple thousand dollars to have him come do it, so that's why it's $2,250 higher than what I had in my budget because there's stuff in the system that he couldn't, the other guy couldn't see without sitting down and doing that work. So that's the reason it's more than what it is. But that system runs the whole entire building and also this new software will allow us to connect the fire alarm system up with this, which like if there's a fire alarm, it'll be able to shut the air handlers off and, you know, protect the building from getting, you know, infiltrated in smoke. But we have to have this software to run every, run, it runs the whole, like I said, the whole building is run on that.
Those are the downstairs, is this thing still running boiler heat?
Yes. Yep. And it has nothing actually, it really has nothing to do with that part of it downstairs. All, all this software does is just control the actuators that lets hot water come to, to like the registers or the certain amount of air go into the rooms. It keeps track of that and, and balances it all out.
That's a capital improvement project.
Yes.
So he's over.
Couple thousand grand over?
Yeah, $2,250 over. Thank you.
How's that work for your budget, Ron?
Good, we're good to go.
Let's take a good 10% coverage there. My second is discuss the maintenance jack of zoning ordinance, where you don't use cannabis.
Um, I distributed a revised draft of the ordinance, it's only real change from what I hope you see this afternoon is, uh, we have not included, um, on page seven, we stopped at light industrial district and M1 district and it didn't make any sense to exclude heavy industrial district because that may be where something could locate. So all I've added is the M2 heavy industrial district is an additional zoning district where some of these facilities could locate. In summary, um, the ordinance is set up to allow a dispensary in the B2 zoning district as a special use and then, uh, additional uses in the B3 and the light industrial and the ORI and so forth. Um, the thing that I need some back, some, uh, feedback from you on, um, are the distances that we built in here, this is pretty much a model ordinance, but they, for the dispensaries, add a 1,500 foot setback from any church, school and so forth and, um, 1,500 foot setback from any residential zone property. And as Kelly pointed out when I talked with him today, if we have a 1,500 foot setback on everything from those types of uses, there's very few locations in town where you could locate any dispensary or any other type of facility. So I've taken the liberty of shortening or, uh, decreasing the size in the B2 district, the downtown district, or any district for a dispensary of 150 feet rather than the 1,500 feet. I've kept the 1,500 feet for the other different, uh, types of facilities, um, such as the craft grower or, uh, an infuser facility or transportation or processing. Um, you might note as well, there's not a specific or a special category for a lounge type of parlor or something like that, rather, under the dispensary language, um, it is possible to have, um, a lounge set up, but there's very strict requirements for that and again, what I had learned at the recent municipal conference is that you won't see any lounges for the simple fact you can't get insurance on them. Colorado's had adult use cannabis for quite some time, they had two of these parlors in Denver, they now have one for that entire city because no one will open one of those without, uh, insurance and you cannot get insurance on them. Um, the procedure from here on out, once we finalize this language, we put it before the petition to go before the plans commission most likely at the December meeting, they'll give a recommendation on it, come back to you for first reading of the ordinance approving the zoning classifications. Um, I'm not sure I'm going to be here for the meeting in November, so if at all possible, review this for the first meeting in November, review this, get back to me this week with any changes you'd like to see and I can see if it's something we may be able to implement, put in here, because in my absence, they may, you may well want to finalize the language so Kelly can get the petition prepared 21 days before the plans commission meeting in December. Okay? I think this is in pretty good shape. Uh, I think we've got most of the little glitches out of it. Um, the real question is, are you satisfied with 150 foot setbacks for the dispensaries? Do you want more than that? And are you comfortable with 1,500 foot setbacks for all other types of facilities or do you want something less than that?
Are the setback distances similar to those for alcohol establishments, bars and other stores?
Uh, the 150 foot is, the 500 foot is not. Um, I think it is 150 or 250 feet from a, from a church or school to a tavern.
Well, I would say that should be exactly or similar to, of what an alcohol requirement is, the distance.
Any other thoughts on that? Because that could put it, for example, 150 feet within a residential zone property.
Is there a reason why, like, the colleges were up there?
No, it's just, I took it from the model ordinance, the colleges were not included and, uh, there's language there too about the types of schools, there are a couple of different types of schools that are not included in the setback as well. Learning centers and vocational trade centers are not classified as public or private school. If you wanted to include, um, colleges in the definition of schools, I can do that, we would want to be, concerned is I guess if we're going to have a possibility of having one downtown and with Lincolnland downtown, that might knock down out if we include that.
How, how is the, um, both of the alcohol establishments on the square distance located to Lincolnland?
Uh, whatever they were, they would have predated Lincolnland being up there. It's not that their grandfather, they were in existence at the time Lincolnland moved in, so you, you can't have a school or a church open up and knock an existing use out. Any other questions on that?
So one of the, um, I, and I glanced over this very quickly this afternoon.
You had so much time, I could do this afternoon.
Um, one of the things that I didn't see in here and I wonder if we might consider this for food for thought, um, one of the things I don't want to see, if any dispensary already canvassed things open up downtown, a whole bunch of flutter flags and signage, that's just pounding everyone in the face. And I think you see a lot of that with the CVC oil or gamble here, slots here, poker machines here, um, so that's, that's something I'd like for us to figure out how, how we can control.
Let me do a little bit of work on the signage and get some language in there for you. Thank you. Anything else? Again, don't hesitate to give me a call, send me an email or something with any questions you may have on this, um, and we'll move forward with it.
Thank you. Utility Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, two items, number one, discuss water purchase agreement with North Morgan Water Co.
And I've got that one as well. Um, this involves a slight extension of the North Morgan system out in the very northwest kind of corner of the system, which would be out in the north of Martyr Village, but the big change that we're making here, um, the first contract with North Morgan was in 2004 and since then, we've had, I think, two addendums and maybe five to six amendments. And so the contract's getting very unwieldy and I give all credit to Brad Wilson with North Morgan Water Co. Brad went through and basically deleted everything that we didn't need, either things that were involved with the original construction of the system or things that no longer apply and has really streamlined this contract so it's a much more understandable and workable contract without having to flip through seven or eight amendments and addendums to figure out where you are. So in essence, it's a cleanup, a very good cleanup of the existing contract, a replacement contract, adding the slight extension up in the northwest corner of the, of the system. Um, Brad's here to answer any questions, but I, it's, I think it's a very great job on that and I'm glad I didn't have to do it and print it for him, so.
He'll add about 50 new households in northwest, so that'll be, have much water.
Have you always been providing water there or is it something completely new?
It's, we've been providing water in the area, it's just additional loop that comes into play.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and that is by resolution, so it'll just be, uh, approval for ten.
Number two, discuss adding new maintenance position for utility operation at water treatment plant. And Mr. Karen, we had talked about that.
Well, it was come last month.
We talked about this in committee and everybody was in agreement with the, uh, but it's me. I have visited there last week and there is still a lot to do, there's everything from the old plant that got stored in the new, I mean, there's even a list left over, not that they, you know, it's just, how do you find the time to add in stuff when you're already slotted to do all the jobs that you have to do, plus everything that comes up when some emergency happens. So I know that both the water and sewer have four operators, the sewer has two maintenance and the water has one, so it'd be an eight-hour position to equal the other maintenance employee and that would align it with the sewer plant as far as the work hours, one maintenance guy trying to do everything just doesn't really work out.
You said that.
A maintenance guy just never wound all the time and there's so much going on and everything's computerized, you know, that, that takes longer to work on. He just needs a lot of time to pull somebody off another job to help him, or I've been helping myself and jumping in and helping, or Steve, my new assistant, he, there's always somebody that I have to be with and most of the time to help out, that or we just go and simply he goes at us. And then that takes away from our time and getting our stuff organized and, and we, we really need him about three years ago. You know, now it's come full circle, we've been clamped a year and a half and we, that, we know what we need now and try to build it out, you know, Matt's getting called two or three o'clock, four o'clock in the morning, just play that with, you know, it's just, just kind of odd on one side.
So to clarify, at the new water plant, things are breaking down on a regular basis?
They're not breaking down, we got analyzer, online analyzer, run 24 hours a day, seven days a week, they need to be recalibrated every age it's made, they just take more, more need, I guess you're going to, I should say.
And it was, and again, it was the only one that we're on when we approved the new water plant, our hope was that we wouldn't have to add additional employees to make the water plant run, that it was supposed to run more smoothly and more efficient, so it wouldn't be an additional, um, employee to be hired. I understand things change, but.
It does run a lot better than the old plan, I'll tell you that, smoother, but this equipment still needs maintenance. I don't think you're going to get, take the humans back out of these machines, I mean, they run for a couple weeks, the bottles have to be recharged, you know, they have to be cleaned and recalibrated.
You're just talking normal operation.
Yeah, this is just normal stuff. In the meantime, if something breaks down, you drop it in and run to that to take care of the problem.
Is there any certification, qualification, what are you looking at here?
Well, really hard to have people certified, I want him to get his license, and he's going to have to be more than just a maintenance, he doesn't have no computers.
Also got to fill in.
Yeah, he's going to fill in for an operator on 12, right now, where I'm 12 hours shifts, you know, that's first, I've canceled vacations all summer because I didn't have people to run it. And so I want to make this guy an operator, something like Matt Zimmer, he can go around the back, hold down water breaks, just wherever I need him to go.
Sure you have someone in mind right now?
No.
Okay.
No.
So the person.
But I, I just want somebody that I know we can train, has got some.
How to go up?
Yeah.
So the person you bring in, would they already be certified?
If they was, that'd be great.
And if they're not, will the new stipulations fall into place that they would have to have their certification in X amount where they would not, they would be let go?
Yep, I want him to get licensed too.
It would follow our collective bargaining agreement, the language that we signed on the last one.
Okay.
It's 24 months from the execution of the CBA.
So he will have to get licensed, but rest of the operating.
But he will still be on an eight-hour maintenance.
Yes.
Not the 12-hour.
Unless you're filling in for some shift or something.
Which is what Matt currently does.
That's what he does.
And that drops the maintenance down to four days a week.
Yes.
So this, the overtime should drop too then, right?
Hopefully it will, yes.
Will this ship run the same as the current maintenance or is this going to be an overlapping shift?
No, they'll be running together from the morning 7:00 to 4:30.
We know what the difference is between a, a soured employee and the cost for overtime.
Yes, Sally has those numbers. Sally was that, uh, including me and Matt, last year it was $8,500 and overtime gets priced to the court minister.
And a new employee would be what?
I think around 52, 53.
You want to run back off?
We're just, you know, it's not just the overtime, the day-to-day operations, they just chasing themselves around.
Aren't you saying you keep running that way, they're not going to be there?
I don't want to run and ground in the league, it'd be exceptional for you.
And I know one thing I asked Sally about overtime was that there is more overtime from the water than the sewer as far as I guess because of that reason, so.
Could we get away with a part-time instead of a full-time?
I don't think so, because I don't think it would work part-time, you know, if you want a full-time job. This year it's basically going to be a full-time job.
As we, as we discussed in the committee, um, no one wants to add another employee in pension and all that, we all get that. Our old, um, supervisor, Jack Cottler, tried to lean this direction as well, he put it off as long as he could and now Rick's in the same position, Rick's asking for the same thing. It's not that he wants another person to supervise, he needs him, he needs him, wants another employee and if we don't give him another employee, some people are going to probably walk out. So it's need.
I understand the benefits of an employee, I just want to go back to what I said here. On this contract, this individual has a certain time to get certified and if they don't, then they lose their job. Done.
Correct.
Okay? Because I don't want someone getting a position that was set in it two years ago, hey, I said I don't want to get certified, sorry. Okay? Out, done.
Now, they will be, the new hire will, their clock will start running upon their new hire. Everybody else that's there is 24 months from the signing of that collective bargaining agreement. So everybody that's on staff right now has that 24-month clock ticking upon this new hire, this one will have a 24-month, because it does take that long, you have to operate for one year in order to get your class D and then your C comes along with it, our maintenance are D. One thing I will add in support for Rick, we just recently lifted the vacation freeze. We've had a vacation freeze because one of our operators were on medical leave and in that case that freeze, I mean, our calendar, our maintenance guy cannot operate a shift, which we had him doing, and do the preventative maintenance that has to be done on certain things, otherwise we're over-suffering a lot of things, warranties, if things aren't done, things aren't done timely, um, and our water quality is also, so we just lifted, we got our person back and the union is constantly saying, you know, of course they want more people and, and we kept a pain in the knee, we have no extras, if you look at some of the other water plants.
And I just want to support him on this, if we're going to support him with a new position, I want one that he's going to be able to use and wants to get certified and move up in the system, okay? If he's going to get somebody, he might as well get someone that's willing to work.
Well, if that's somebody that's, we want to hire him up front, I'm going to tell them, make sure they know, they have to get that license.
And this, this is going to be, I think, a higher level position other than an operator, because this isn't going to be your, because you're going to have so much computer and electronic and maintenance skills on you, when you're finding some of that, those people do exist out in the water world.
Okay.
Okay? So they may come in and already have been working in that class, the only thing they need is their operator time and then they could obtain it even before some of our current operators that are there.
That they're willing to get.
Because in that field, when you're looking at the skating system, those people are out there.
Cheryl, are you going to write the qualifications for this or do we already have?
We already have the qualifications for, um, the current maintenance, but those are probably going to be beeped up a lot more because of our new plant and our new system, which is more computer and more electronics, which we didn't have when we wrote the last job description, but it will be the same money, the only thing, our maintenance guy now gets a stipend for being lead. Um, he'll still be the lead, the new guy will be under.
So there's more action?
So there's more action with Matt, correct? Can we see those qualifications, the newer ones?
Those should have been at, at committee though.
No, I didn't bring them.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, those have been written because we have current job description of maintenance, and then if we will, and these were written before the plant was even opened by Jack Cottler. This is our future maintenance. This is our wish, you know, what we're gonna do going forward, because things change. Things become more advanced and the more electronics that we get. Um, but Jack started those and when he was on his watch, and it's, it's hard, very hard. And then now Rick's taking it over, but I certainly am getting those too.
I saw more than a load on, we're just looking for your rule and, so you can say it and whatever.
Will that wording have with something like an on-call duty to where one person isn't getting all the calls? They can split it up week by week or month by month or by monthly or something?
Two things on that. They're always subject to be on-call as maintenance, and then per their collective bargaining agreement, overtime's distributed evenly by, you know, that's already in their, their language, by job classification, so that we can't just throw all the overtime at one operator. It has to be distributed evenly. All that's already in collective bargaining.
So we continue with the three-fourth vacancy to qualifications. I support you. You need to call the persons.
Like she said about the vacation freeze, and they have the rest of the year to try to fit in everybody's vacation, so, you know, they really, we struggle just to do that with the people they got.
And it's not a twelve-hour shift problem. We've had this for like the past three years. And what, what that means is we cannot take their vacation away, so we extend their vacation to either March or June of the next year. And some of our senior operators, they have some vacation time. We're then paying that two thousand nineteen vacation and two thousand twenty break. So every time that happens, that's digging the whole war too. And, and they've certainly worked with us. The union's been very good and worked with us to help us, you know, trying to let this. But this is not gonna, by adding another person, it's not gonna let more operators off. It's just gonna help cover for medical leaves, which do happen, and sickness. Because right now, anytime that happens, we lean on that maintenance man, and then that takes that maintenance man out of doing anything that needs done at that plant. Because there's no extras.
I'm gonna ask after, but I'm gonna go and ask him out. There's, there's not a company or someone that would travel around to different municipal water plants to provide maintenance, or there are some.
If, if they're familiar with our, there's a lot of ifs on that. Um, and then you're of course on their schedule.
Basically, what you're doing there is talking about privatizing part of the utility, and then that would create a lot of issues that we got with the collective bargaining agreement and outside.
That causes you many issues on your, yeah.
You're trying to take nothing out of the box.
That's the nothing.
It's a good thought, yeah. Yeah, you can't do that.
Yeah.
You can come up and say, well, they want six hundred dollars to drive them down.
So this, this is actually gonna be on the job training, right?
Yes, yes. You gotta learn our equipment, our way, and get his license.
Any public comment at this time?
Public comment, a little emotion for executive session. Alderman Goldnail, sent by Alderman Warner.
That's for, uh, to discuss collective bargaining.
I'd ask everybody to please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd ask the clerk to please call roll. Adams?
Here.
Bartlett?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Bonnergan?
Here.
Odenell?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Wonkel?
Here.
Formowski? Williams? Mayor Edson?
Here.
City Attorney Beard?
Here.
You have a call. Very good. Um, is there a reading of the minutes this evening?
I still move to accept the minutes.
Alderman Hopkins, second by Alderman Large Old Nettle. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please respond by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Presentation of petitions?
None.
And communications?
None.
I have one though, and I think that's why the doctor and Mrs. Olenek are here. Last Monday, or last Monday or Tuesday, I received a letter from Liz Tracy, who lives on State Street, uh, asking for consideration of closing a portion of State Street for Halloween on October thirtieth and thirty-first. Do this, because the foot traffic is so substantial on State Street, many neighbors are concerned for the safety of the children as they cross back and forth. Uh, appreciate if you'd allow us to close the section of State Street between Webster and Park from five to nine on October thirtieth, thirty-first. Uh, my neighbors and I will canvass the area with flyers and update our neighborhood Facebook group to get the word out about the Halloween street closure, should you approve it. In addition, I'll make certain those living on State Street between the blocks of Webster and Park make alternate routes. Chief Mefor and I spoke on this. Um, heck, it's been about a month ago, and, and we were already kinda considering it, but we were like, let's just, let's go one more year and see how, uh, things develop, because he puts five officers on duty that night in that area. However, I received this and our mindset changed on this. And, um, Chief, I know you, you got a plan in place. Um, and I see the Doc, Dr. Olenek and his wife Chrissy here that may wanna speak on this. I don't know if you're for this or against this, so I don't.
I just really wanted to hear what the plan was.
Okay.
I'm not necessarily against it. Um, I think maybe in the future, if that is gonna be the plan to close several streets. And all I saw was the article from WLPS, so, um, in my opinion, whatever the word, if it's gonna be closed like that, maybe the city should consider just one night in the years to come.
Okay.
But I just really wanted, we came to here with actual, like, that's the point.
So you haven't, you haven't been in contact with Liz?
No, I, um, I talked to six different people on our street, and nobody's heard from her.
Okay.
To say that the neighborhood wants that. Maybe she talked to some of the other people I didn't talk to.
Yeah.
I just asked people that I'm friends with in that area, and nobody...
Right. Well, you know, it's, we don't have to go this route. I mean...
And I'm not saying we're against it at all. I think it's kind of a good idea. I thought last year where they had the, at the corner of our house, the officers distracted traffic, that was fabulous.
And I think...
I was kinda was curious, and that's why we're here. We just wanted to hear what the plan was.
Yeah.
And that, you know, the mass transit buses come into Duncan Park and let kids out. I wanted to know if that was still gonna happen.
Yeah.
I wanted to find out.
This, it's a big, Chris, it's a big deal. And if you don't know Dr. Olenek and his wife, they have the house on the corner there. And they really decorated it up very nice, along with the ceilings next door, and, and I know you have a plan, Chief Mefor, so if you wanna stand up and, um, kinda give your thoughts. Cause this was kinda prompted. It, it, coincidentally, I was on What's On Your Mind, and I had to talk about this because I was asked, and then it just kinda snowballed. But obviously, it's the council that has the call on this. I just, we have to get the word out, though, pretty fairly quick.
So, when the mayor and I talked a month ago about this, we knew from the past few years how busy State Street has gotten. And we've been, for the past three years, assigning officers on foot patrol to help direct traffic, you know, help. And some of the officers had approached me previous to this and were, was talking about, should we look into closing State Street? And I said, well, you know, we've got officers down there, and they were explaining how some of the close calls, because of the dark costumes, and some people just drive too fast.
Right.
And so we were discussing it, and then we discussed, well, you know, are we going to invite even more people into this area if we close the street down? Are the homeowners gonna be happy about five hundred more people coming on the street if we close it down? We're saying that this is the hub for trick-or-treating. But then the mayor, we talked and we decided, well, let's go one more year with the officers, just helping with traffic. But then the letter came in, and we had discussed, and, and the mayor came to me and said, and we assumed that this letter meant that the people in the neighborhood were in agreeance. So with that letter, the mayor was gonna come tonight, and in anticipation, if the council decides to go the direction of shutting that portion of the street down, we have a plan in place to release a map tomorrow via social media with what we're gonna do with traffic. So people aren't pulling up, wanting to know, why can I, can I go here? Can I go here? Hopefully, typically when we put out informationals like that on our Facebook page, it gets shared a bunch. So we would hope that if the street gets closed, we'll be able to get our message out. Will it run smoothly? I don't know, but our plan, you're here to hear the plan, if the street is shut down, we're gonna close at Webster and State diagonally to leave the entrance to Duncan Park open. But there'll be an officer directing traffic at that barricade, so if traffic comes Webster and wants to get into the park to park, we're gonna let them go in there. At Park Street, coming back to Duncan Park, we'll also be at a diagonal with an officer stationed there to let traffic out of Duncan Park. So you can come in and out, but we plan on closing Sandusky at Lafayette to through traffic only. So if the people on, we can't just shut down Lafayette and Sandusky and not let the people come to their homes on there. And so Sandusky at Lafayette would be closed to through traffic. And then that section of basically half Webster and State to half Park and State would allow traffic in and out directed by the officers. That was the plan that we were going to release if this is approved. If not, then we would just go back to what we did on normal years. We'll have officers there with reflective vests and do our best to help people across the street.
Shouldn't we hear from the residents?
Halloween's in two days.
It's a timing, I mean, well, uh...
It's a timing thing.
Six, at least six of your neighbors?
I've talked, um, I've talked to, yeah, well, yeah, I've talked to a few, but nobody, nobody, I don't, I don't know Liz Tracy personally. I didn't talk to her, just didn't talk to her. And I'm not saying I'm against this. I just wanted to know what the plan was gonna be. We only hand out candy one night anyway, so for us, it's just on the thirty-first. But for our kids and for him to be able to get to the hospital and things like that, we just kinda wanted to know with the traffic, what that, what that whole plan was. But as far as everybody being talked to by her and everybody agreeing with this, I can say that's simply not true. And I, like I said, I think it's a great idea to shut the street down, because there are a lot of close calls. Our corner is ridiculously busy. Like, I can't believe how busy it is. And again, the officers, that's, that was so good last year, and, but there were still, people just drive like idiots. And it, in my opinion, it's just candy that they're going for. I don't really understand it, but, um, I just, I, I just wanted to come, like I said.
I think we should shut it down. That, that's just, I mean, timing wise, this letter came in, it has to go to the council. Well, the meeting's tonight, and it, it's, it's just timing.
Yeah.
In the perfect world, this would have been a month ago, but it wasn't, and I think we, uh, sign on the caution of safety and, and see how it goes. And if it doesn't go good this year, then we go back.
I agree, we should do something. My son is six years old, he's seven. Even with the police, it is very dangerous around there. Try it for the early, just next year, maybe a little earlier, but let's try something. It's just so dangerous. I don't think there's gonna be all that many more people coming, because a lot of people see it now, and they turn back and they're like, well, let's go somewhere else, because it's just so crowded already. Nobody wants to do it like that once it gets to a certain point. So, but the kids, it was really bad last year a couple of times, mainly like this, when it's summer, they're in, they all respect it.
Do we, just a question, do we no longer have in our, um...
Radius?
Radius. They just stay within a two-block radius of your home? So that is off the table. When did that get strict?
Last year.
Okay.
And I'd like to add that I mentioned doing a Halloween festival thing at the new Trail Out the Lake. There's also a community park. We could advocate for a citywide Halloween to where, as far as I know, your, and your neighbors' houses are the Halloween spectacular for this community. So as Chief called it, the hub of the trick-or-treating realm, and basically, they're all kids that don't know the rules as far, you know, as well as adults do as far as having a good time on Halloween. We should just let that area be the part that allows trick-or-treating, blocked off to traffic. And if we look forward to next year, we could look at a new location where it would bring more of the population of the community to that event instead of to the State Street houses.
Well...
And there is the Safe, WJBO has a Safe Halloween as well. It's a big, big, and they do that at Prairie, and they do that at Prairieland. It's huge.
I, I also would be in favor of blocking off the road, um, so long as we can inform the, the neighbors and let everyone know that this is, if this is the direction the council decides to go. But it is, if you, we've never trick-or-treated on State Street, but we have driven down State Street just because we were in awe of all the people. We wanted to check it out. It's crazy dangerous. Um, grateful for the police officers that are there, but it might be time to do, do something more.
So Chief, when you shut the street down, it'd be similar to what, to the regular?
From Webster to Park. Well, basically to the angle of Sandusky to Park.
So there'd be no cars parked on State Street?
After five o'clock.
But residents?
Yeah, we would obviously let residents into their homes.
In and out at any time.
Right, yeah, they would be, yeah, we have to make arrangements for them to come and go as they please.
So then, all the side streets are gonna be packed, and you're gonna get kids running back and forth on those, and those are gonna be no different than State Street. I know what our Little Shore Street Prospect looks like at homecoming breaks, uh, you know, and it's gonna be...
There will be...
That's our plan right now, is to leave Duncan Park open.
But only got, there's only a minimal number of spots there, unless you're gonna let them pull out into the park on nights that are supposed to be bad, kinda of...
Yeah, they take care of themselves.
Kinda, so. Someone else you wanna add?
Thank you. I'm hoping my humble opinion, uh, because that corner is so busy, there are a lot of people, like, just a thought I had, and obviously, maybe, maybe to think about it for next year, but like even Finley, like where State Street goes on down to Finley past ISD, I mean, almost from there, because that, like I said, that corner gets busy, kids get dropped off at ISD. I mean, it's, it's like you said, there's no perfect, you know, answer to it, but that's just what we've seen in the last several years we've lived here, but, yeah, I, I, I'm not against it. I just wanted to know what the thought process was and stuff, so. And I agree, I think something needs to be done.
Because of the timing issue, we gotta just go ahead with the plan. I think we need seriously to take a look at it for next year. The thing you're gonna, you're gonna draw a line, you're gonna block. I think we're gonna, Chief, use this test. Let's say here it is.
Okay, that...
We're prepared to handle the situation either way.
Okay, any others? Okay. It's, and we're gonna block the street off. We're shutting it down.
I guess it's a good call. I think it's a good call. The team's got to remind us, those that don't have, just a report light off.
I would, if I can, make a recommendation that we try it on the 30th. And if it looks like it's gonna cause more issues with kids parking down further and running, that we have the ability to revert back to.
That's fine.
Regular traffic with officers helping direct traffic. If it works smoothly and we don't have any issues and the neighborhood seems to flow well, then we have the option to do the same thing on the next night. But if not, then we could revert back.
And Chief, with your social media that you do and whatever the news might do, I think we should also encourage parents to be with their children, not to drop them off. Because I think that's where mistake, more mistakes could happen.
We're going to put out a press release in the morning regarding that, along with the map for tomorrow, or for Wednesday. Okay. Any claims tonight?
No.
No claims. Under the mayor's report, item number one is the reappointment of Mary Watts to the Commission on Disabilities and Human Relations, term to expire October 30th, 2022. I need a motion. Alderman Cook, second by Alderman Wonkel.
Yes.
Voice vote, all those in favor of reappointing Mary Watts, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number two is the appointment of Colton Pettyjohn to the Commission on Disabilities and Human Relations, term to expire October 30th, 2022. And is there a motion for Mr. Pettyjohn? Alderman Hopkins, second by Alderman Scott. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Pettyjohn, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Colton is a young, young man that works at J-SIL, just graduated from McMurray College. So he was interested in taking that on, so. He'd be perfect. He's a good, good person for that. Consent agenda items tonight. Finance, IT, and personnel. Alderman Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two items tonight. First is the city treasurer's report, which is in everybody's folder for September 30th, 2019. And the second item is a resolution authorizing waiver of advertisement forbids an accepting proposed lease agreement from Pitney Bowes Incorporated for a new postage meter.
Planning and public works, Alderman Scott?
We have one item tonight. Resolution authorizing waiver of advertisement forbids and accepting proposal from Siemens Industry for HVAC control system software upgrades.
And utility, Alderman Wonkel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items tonight. Number one, resolution approving water purchase agreement with the North Morgan Water Cooperative. Number two, resolution authorizing payment from the Water Works and Sewerages Project Fund for services rendered improvement projects and I shall move.
And is there a second? Alderman Bartlett? Uh, is there any consent agenda items you wish to pull for further consideration? Seeing none, I would ask the clerk to please call roll. Adams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Bonnigan?
Yes.
Odenell?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'll back up. Is there any public comment at this time? No public comment. Committee reports tonight. Planning and public works, Alderman Scott?
Yeah, four items.
Eric, I'll skip that first.
Skip it?
Yep.
Three items. First reading of an ordinance amending the Jacksonville zoning map for property located at 154 West Morton Avenue from B3 to B3 with special use. And I shall move.
Is there a second? Alderman Bonnigan?
Be it ordained that the Jacksonville zoning map be amended, changing the use classification of 154 West Morton Avenue from B3 Limited Business to B3 Limited Business District with a special use permit.
Any discussion?
What is that?
That one is a pharmacy.
A drive-through.
Drive-through.
Discussion? I would ask the clerk to please call roll. Bartlett?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Bonnigan?
Yes.
Odenell?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is the, the second reading of an ordinance amending the Jacksonville zoning map for property located at 1723 West Morton Avenue from PD Mix to PD Mix with special use. And I shall move.
Is there a second? Alderman Large Old Nettle?
Be it ordained that the Jacksonville zoning map be amended for property at 1723 West Morton Avenue, changing the use classification from PD Plant Development District to PD Mix. Plant Development District with special use. This is a car wash in front of Hampton Inn.
There must be some business, good business in the car wash industry. Any, any discussion? I'd ask the clerk to please call roll. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yes.
What is a special use?
In this particular case, in the previous one, special use permit is required anytime you have a drive-through facility because they want to check, the Plans Commission wants to check and see what the traffic patterns are as they come around. Otherwise, a special use is a separate section of the zoning ordinance that allows you to put various requirements and restrictions in order to get the rezoning approved. So for example, all of the cannabis ordinance items that we're talking about will be with a special use. So it always has to go back to the Plans Commission to make sure that the parking is okay, that the traffic is okay, that the security, the lighting and all that is appropriate.
Okay.
Discussion? I would ask the clerk to please call roll. Hopkins?
Yes.
Bonnigan?
Yes.
Odenell?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
And Cook?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item was second reading of an ordinance amending the Jacksonville zoning map for property located at 1201 Allen from R5 to R3. And I shall move.
Uh, is there a second? Alderman Hopkins?
Be it ordained that the Jacksonville zoning map be amended, changing the use classification at 1201 Allen Avenue from R5, multiple family dwelling district, to R3, one family dwelling district. This is to allow the placement of a manufactured home on that lot.
Discussion? I would ask the clerk to please call roll. Bonnigan?
Yes.
Odenell?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passes. Very good. Is there any old business this evening? Any old business? Any new business?
I would still like to see something done about the cannabis tax being equal along with the alcohol and tobacco tax being zero. It needs to be at least something if cannabis is at the max tax. So that's one thing I've been saying since I voted for the tax on cannabis.
Yes, Chief?
We'll be trick-or-treating at our substation on Walnut Wednesday night from 6:00 to 7:30. Our substation will be open for the kids to come for a sake trick-or-treating there.
Very good.
They, I'm dressed, I'm scary anyway, apparently.
It's good to cover as a policeman.
We're teaming up with Pasment Hospital for that event, too.
Any other new business? Is there a? Motion adjourned by Alderman Hopkins, second by Alderman Bonnigan. We are adjourned.